Good reference.
Seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, and no, that's a bad answer.
I think there's just something to leave to the next one.
We call the meeting of the September 12th Amherst City Council to order at seven o'clock. Roll call. Mr. Van Shuren.
Here.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Here.
Mr. Winarski.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Janik.
Here.
Mr. Bukavak.
Here.
Mr. Goodell.
Here.
Will you stand with me for the... Oh, wait a minute, we gotta excuse Shorty.
Who else?
Yes.
Make motion to excuse President Shorty.
And he does have a letter on his lap. Mr. Janik.
President Shorty.
Mr. Goodell.
I'm sorry, as he has a letter.
President Shorty.
President Shorty. Okay.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Dietrich from tonight's meeting. Yes, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried seven to zero, thank you gentlemen. Will you please rise for the prayer and then for the pledge of the flag by Sergeant-at-Arms Bukavak? Will you bow with me, please? Gracious God, bless this meeting tonight. Bless all who are here. Bless all residents of Amherst. Guide our decisions. Keep us ever mindful of the needs of each member of our community. And bless all of our candidates for public office. Keep them safe and healthy. Watch over us all. And now may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, our rock and our redeemer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to item four, the consent agenda. I just made a note that Madam Clerk has submitted all of the consent agenda items from the meetings from this past summer to me via email. Correct. And will you please read the consent agenda?
Minutes of the regular council meeting held July 25th, 2016. Minutes of the special council meetings held July 29th, August 1st, and August 15th, 2016. Minutes of the street committee meeting held August 15th, 2016. Minutes of the finance committee meetings held July 25th and September 6th, 2016. Minutes of the ordinance committee meeting held September 6th, 2016.
Mr. Janik.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried seven to zero. Item number five is acknowledgement of the public pertaining to items on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to comment on any item pertaining to the agenda? Mr. Auditor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to direct counsel's attention to items A and B. And my clerk and I were discussing these items and looking at the calendar, timeframe, and I'm asking if you could please add the emergency tonight to these so that we can move those funds and take them available because we do need them mostly for payroll purposes.
Okay, so item A and B.
Yes.
Mr. Law Director, do we need a separate motion to add those before we...
Yeah, I would.
Okay. So we'll need a motion to add the emergency, a motion to suspend. You want to suspend rules? And then pass it on? Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure. Is there any other comment pertaining to any item on the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Auditor. The next item is item six, ordinances and resolutions, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the increase in appropriations for part-time wages and for contributions to public employee retirement system and Medicare for part-time employees of the park and pool.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to add the emergency clause to item six A.
Okay, and this is a motion to add the emergency clause to item six A. Mr. Miller.
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Miller. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call... Oh, Mr. Goodell.
Oh, no. I'm sorry.
Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Just point of order, are we voting on this motion with suspension rules? Because I didn't hear that.
We're just adding... No, we're just motioning right now.
Moving to add.
Just to...
Okay, thank you.
To almost add the emergency.
In that case, thank you, yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Janik.
Motion to suspend council rules so that six A can be passed on the first reading.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to suspend rules so that item six A can be passed on the first reading. Are there comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt, please.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Ordinance O-16-29.
Item six B.
An ordinance reappropriating funds in various accounts.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to add the emergency clause to item six B.
Thank you very much. Mr. Janik.
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second to add the emergency clause to item six B. Comments or questions? Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The... Just a real quick confirmation from Mayor Safety Service Director that these are... Wages are expected or within reason for part-time, added part-time wages and salaries?
That's more than necessary. If they're not used, then we'll look at it closely, they'll just go right back into the budget. So those are numbers the auditor came up with that we agree that is close.
It's a buffer. Okay, it's a buffer. Okay, great, thank you. That's all I need. No more questions?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item six B may be passed on its first reading.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Second, please.
There's a motion and a second to suspend council rules so that item six B can be passed on its first reading. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Miller.
Move to adopt, please.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Ordinance O-16-30.
Item six C.
An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a cooperation agreement with Amherst Township to file a joint application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for State Issue One, Round Thirty-One Funds for roadway repairs and improvements to Middle Ridge Road and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Goodell.
Mr. Mayor, does this ordinance need to be passed on the first reading or we just need the emergency?
Passing on the first reading would help. That way the township could get all their paper in order and, you know, we'd have a best chance of getting that project approved.
Mr. Law Director, do we need to make another amendment?
I would, yes.
Okay, well then I would like to...
What says emergency? It's already on.
It's already...
It's already in.
It's already in course.
So just suspend council rules.
This is...
Yeah.
We just need to get it.
Now I'd like to make a motion to suspend council rules so item six C may be passed on its first reading with the emergency.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to suspend council rules so item six C can be passed on its first reading. Are there comments or questions?
Just a quick comment, just to let you know, the city's contribution to this project will be $5,858 total, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Miller.
Eleven point one-five percent is...
That's total dollar cost and the state pays their share.
That was my question. So we have state money coming in as well?
We pay twenty percent of whatever our small portion of that is. We pay eleven percent of the whole... Of the municipality and the township.
Okay.
So that's total dollar amount, you're staying on there.
So the state is kicking in?
Eighty percent of that is what that typically is.
Okay. It just says township will provide funds totally, so I was... Township's gonna... On behalf of the township, they're gonna ask for state money for that.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So it's actually gonna be less than the fourteen grand that I looked at as eleven percent of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight.
Yep.
It'll be around nearly five...
The township engineer sent me information when I asked. He said our portion will be fifty-eight-hundred-some-odd dollars. Estimated.
Fantastic, to fix that. Bless, thank you. Thank you for getting that together.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Miller for answering the question. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote. This is a vote to suspend.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Rules are suspended, or that rule is suspended. Mr. Janik.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Ordinance O-16-31.
We have item six D.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to solicit bids to supply the city with gasoline and diesel fuel for a period of twelve months, and authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to award the contract for such products to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to take item six D to the second reading.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to take item six D to the second reading. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. We have... Now we have item six E.
An ordinance approving the subdividers agreement between the City of Amherst, Ohio, and Cambridge Development Two LLC for the Preserve at Quarry Lake subdivision number one.
Before we take any motions on this, Mayor has asked to speak. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. We... Typically, this legislation for the subdividers agreement also includes the plat. Planning Commission did approve and ask this to be forwarded on to council, the plat and the subdividers agreement. So before you today, when you sat at your chair, there was a letter from the Building Department who brought this to our attention, and there's copies of the plat attached. Mr. Brady would be here to answer any questions, but what I need you to do first is please would amend this legislation to also include the plat, so that would have to be done first. And this isn't going to be passed on the first reading. You do have multiple readings to review this, so I'm not asking you to just breeze this through. I'm just asking it to be part of this legislation like it typically is. So if you have any questions, either I or Mr. Brady can answer them for you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, this is...
Does that make sense?
This is the same map that we were given before, correct?
It was in your information, but we just did not ask.
So this is something we have seen before.
You have seen it before. We just did not ask the plat to be part of this legislation. That's typically what we do. It was just left out in the proposal.
Just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was...
So the legislation would need to be amended first.
Mr. Bukavak.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend A-1641 to include the plat information that's been supplied by David and the Attorney, Building Inspector, and the Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Van Truen.
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second to include this plat map and its information to the item six E. Any comments or questions? Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to put on record that after looking at this plat once again, that I really would have liked to have seen the outlet, a road off of Main at, looks like... And this is... I'm trying to find which pages would be for you guys. You could either... Actually, the last two pages you could have used. Either leading off of this Lakeview Circle or somewhere else in development. I just wanted to get on record that I would have liked to have seen the access road put in, maybe not opened up to the full use of the development yet until all building is done. But in the end, I would have liked to have seen not only this used for construction vehicles, this entrance off of Main, I would like to have seen it continue... A street continue all the way through and connect this development to North Main. So I just want to make sure I get that on record for my vote in support of this.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Mayor.
Just to make a quick comment, this is for phase one. I mean, the road wouldn't be extended that far into those other phases, and I'll be flat out honest again, even if that was a permanent road, I doubt very highly if the Safety Service Director and I would allow the construction traffic down Cooper Foster. We've got that section of road that's failing that we're studying in those S-curves. There's...
You mean Main? You mean Main?
South, yeah, I mean, south on...
North Main. South on North Main.
Yeah, on North Main, I'm sorry. On the southbound lane. And I think that there's more houses impacted by taking that traffic that way. I think it's an unsafe route for all those vehicles. But this is just phase one. That road doesn't go that far at this point. I mean, just because it's not in this plat doesn't mean it might be there in the future. But just to... Phase one, like I said, I doubt highly we would approve that as a construction route anyway.
Okay.
So unless Mr. Brady had something to add, I just want to let counsel know how we felt.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? This motion is to amend the item six E. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Mr. Goodell.
I'd like to make a motion to take item six E to its second reading.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
Motion and a second to take item six E to its second reading.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you very much. Thank you. As amended. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion carries seven to zero. Six F.
A resolution establishing the aggregate sum of money for blanket purchase orders pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.41D3.
Mr. Bukavak.
Make a motion to take item six F to its second reading.
Mr. Goodell.
Second.
Motion and a second to take item six F to its second reading. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Second, send it to the second reading. The next item is item seven, ordinances and resolutions, second reading. There are none. The next item is item eight, ordinances and resolutions, third reading. Item eight A, please.
An ordinance to amend 192.10 and 192.23 to comply with state law changes made to ORC 718.03 and 718.05.
Mr. Goodell.
Make a motion to adopt.
Mr. Miller.
Second with comment or question. Mr. Ramsey, how is this a positive thing for your office?
Whether it's positive or negative, it's one of those things that since the state... Since we're a statutory city, our municipal income tax laws controlled by state statute essentially, since the state legislature changed the tax code recently, this is one of those things that we really don't have much choice but to just comply with because they're kind of, I guess, filling out the process. I suppose it would be... I suppose it's better in a way because it's just... If I'm not mistaken, it relapses one of the provisions about how... About when the payments are due for withholding. I think it basically puts it back to how it was before this new legislation took place. So, sorry for the long answer.
Would you like the changes, then? They're gonna help your office do the job?
Maybe, on that one.
Okay.
On that one angle, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions?
Any other comments or questions from anyone else? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mr. Van Shuren.
Yes.
Mrs. Wasilk.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Bukavak.
Yes.
Mr. Goodell.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Ordinance O-16-32.
That is all for ordinances and resolutions, third reading. We go on to item nine, miscellaneous and knowledge of the public. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any subject? Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take the time and the opportunity to thank all of our first responders and all those who have put their lives in jeopardy for us and our safety. Of course, we know nine eleven was yesterday, and it doesn't... We need to continue on with this. It's just a thanks personally from me, and I hope our city is recognizing how important our own personal fire and police and safety forces are. So with that, I yield the floor back, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Any other comments, questions, or announcements? Any other comments from anyone? Seeing none, we'll go on to item 10, which is agenda request of committee meeting schedules.
I have one. It's for finance. I have one. It's for finance. It's A-16-43, and it's to increase appropriations for principal account 206-6006-52601, and that's complete.
Okay, thank you very much. For the finance committee, we will have A-16-43 as read. And I believe we have an item that's going to come up with ordinance committee, and I'm going to wait and, for Mr. Miller, and we'll determine what date, whether we're going to have a meeting next week or whether we have it two weeks from now. And that will be determined by his comments when we get to his date. All right. Building and lands, Mr. Janik.
No items, Madam Chair. Please cancel.
Thank you. Streets, Mr. Bukavak.
No items, please cancel.
Community development, Mr. Goodell.
Nothing at this time, Madam President. Please cancel.
Thank you. Executive, Mr. Van Shuren.
No items, Madam President. Please cancel.
All right. Ordinance, Mr. Miller.
Looks like we have one item, tabled item, agenda A-1626 for ordinance. It's a sale and use of alcohol submitted by Chuck Winarski and Dave Janik, our fellow council members. And I'll be glad to call that for September nineteenth at seven o'clock.
Why don't we do that at seven oh five and get the finance committee meeting over with, and that way we can spend the rest of the meeting. I believe the other one's going to take probably some time for discussion.
Seven oh five works for me.
Okay. So we'll call the seven o'clock for the finance committee and seven oh five for the ordinance committee. Let's go down the rest of the list to see if anyone else has any item they wish to bring up. Utilities, Mr. Janik.
No items, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Recycle, Mr. Miller.
Keep recycling, no items, Madam Chair.
Recycling, Mr. Bukavak.
No items, please cancel.
Police and fire, Mr. Winarski.
Nothing, nothing at this time, Madam President.
Annexation, Mr. Miller.
No items, please cancel.
That completes.
No question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And due to the fact that I'm going to be absent next Monday, is there any possible way to have this before council meeting, the following Monday and the twenty-sixth?
Um.
Be careful. There's no money involved.
The ordinance topic was the one that I was working with Mr. Winarski on.
Call it for two weeks. Call it for the first meeting in October.
We can do that. I'd be willing to call it for a committee meeting in October if those who submitted it would request that on my committee. I'm fine with October third at seven o'clock.
I like the idea of having it earlier, only because the law director's recently reviewed it and it's fresh in his mind when he visits. I'd have to check with Lieutenant Cawthon. I'm not sure if that's convenient for him or not. I'm assuming he had planned on being here next week. If you can answer that, I'll follow your lead.
He'll be out of town as well.
I'd like to have Lieutenant here. He's championing this effort, and I think it's critical that we hear from him also. So, thank you. Follow your lead.
So with that being said, it looks like the two councilpersons that brought this to my attention would rather it be called for October third, and we'll do that one at seven. Is that fine, Madam Chair?
What about A-16-43, Mr. Kukuka?
What about?
Can we have a delay on that one or not? That's to the increase the appropriations in that count 206, 6,006, 25601, which is the loan amortization schedules pertaining to that.
I, I, if she, I had not seen that. I know I looked at it real quickly and she didn't tell me the urgency on that.
It says the first loan payment is due January twenty seventeen.
Yeah, we could probably hold off till the third, if you want to do that as well.
Okay, all right, all right. So we will not have a committee meeting next week. Both of these have been postponed, and we'll do that, we'll do the finance committee then at seven.
Seven, it's supposed to be seven oh five.
I may have some other items that are added, but they're probably going to be equally short. And then seven oh five for the, because we want to give plenty of time for the discussion of this ordinance that we're talking about with the underage. So, thank you, gentlemen. Continue to item eleven, reports of the administration. Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Mr. Ramsey.
The August reports have been distributed, and I'm not sure, Mr. Auditor, if you needed some kind of a special motion about our reports being distributed.
Yeah, I was, I was, well, I admire your report.
So you both need that, right?
Yes.
You want that?
Yeah.
Mr. Kukuka.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. In your motion to accept the reports of administration, if you could just say that council did receive the July and August reports from both Ms. Ramsey and my office.
Thank you.
Simple as that. End of report.
Thank you.
And thank you for working with me tonight to put the emergency on both. Again, timeline is shorter than what we anticipated.
Yeah, that's the July and the August reports.
Mr. Jeffries.